All right, welcome this evening. Good to have you all here for the town council meeting this evening. Thank you if we can please call the roll.
Mayor Bryde Cruz.
Here.
Vice Mayor Kaczynski.
Here.
Councilmember Albritton.
Present.
Councilmember Hartman.
Here.
Councilmember Jablonski.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Great, thank you very much. If you please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome once again. Good to have you all here. I'm pleased to read a proclamation this evening for something that's kind of really very dear to our town. And it is for World Down Syndrome Day. And we've been touched by that and blessed by that. And so let me read this proclamation into the record. Whereas Down Syndrome clinically known as Tresome 21 is a generic disorder caused by an abnormal cell division results in an extra full or partial copy of genetic material from chromosome 21 in a person without Down Syndrome, there are 46 chromosomes in the human body. And individuals with Down Syndrome have an extra chromosome, 47. And whereas on December 19th, 2011, the United Nations General Assembly declared March 21st as World Down Syndrome Day. And whereas, World Down Syndrome Day is an opportunity to enhance public education and awareness about Down Syndrome. And whereas, when children and adults with Down Syndrome and other disabilities are given the opportunities to participate, all children benefit from the shared environment. And whereas, this year's World Down Syndrome Day theme is End the Stereotypes. Stereotypes can cause significant harm to the quality of life of people living with Down Syndrome. And whereas, World Down Syndrome Day is an opportunity to enhance public education and awareness about Down Syndrome. Whereas, on Thursday, March 21st, 2024, the town of Southwest Ranches raised awareness, recognized World Down Syndrome Day by participating in the hashtag Lots of Socks campaign by holding their own Wacky Socks Day. And now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and town council of the town of Southwest Ranch and do hereby proclaim March 9th, 2024 as World Down Syndrome Day in the town of Southwest Ranches. And the team here has done a, through that Wacky Socks Day, has raised some funds. And we also have council, or Vice Mayor Kaczynski also has a donation as well. So we'd like to recognize if you can please.
Can you guys hear me if I speak this way?
But yeah, there we go.
That's better. They already know what this is about. I'd rather tell you guys. Good evening. My name is Cheryl Danner. I'm your police service coordinator, and I'm also a member of the Southwest Ranches Events Committee. We originally formed the Southwest Ranches Events Committee to boost morale of our staff here. We do luncheons, you know, we have good time, we look for organizations that we can help. And this year, we came across this wonderful organization, and we couldn't wait to partner with them. We decided that we were going to participate in Wacky Sock Day to raise awareness for Down Syndrome. So March 21st, we all wear our wacky socks. You can see our pictures on our board over here, you can see them also up there. And we did it as a donation from our staff. We said, in order to wear your wacky socks, you have to donate to our cause. And so we partnered with the Broward Gold Coast Down Syndrome Organization. And today, we're going to present them with our donation, and we want to raise awareness about what they do for our local families in our communities, as well as our other local communities. I have with me Mary Beth today from the organization. Do you want to come up? So today, we are going to present you with our donation.
Thank you.
And we look forward to partnering with you again in the future.
Thank you so much.
As far as our town here, we're going to be trying to form a group to do their Down Syndrome Walk, which will be October 12th, 2024. More information's going to be coming on the website about that. And obviously, you guys can all reach out to me because I'll have the information also.
Can I just say two things?
Of course.
Okay.
Absolutely.
So just so you guys know why we do Wacky Socks, if you've looked at pictures of chromosomes, they look like socks. And so they're all different colors. And so 3-2-1 is because there's the 21st chromosome has the extra, so there's three instead of two. And so that is why 3-2-1, March 21st, is National Down Syndrome Day, as Cheryl stated. And then in October, it's Down Syndrome Awareness Month. So that is when we have our annual Step Up for Down Syndrome Walk over in Markham Park. And so we form teams and we sponsor, we get sponsors and things like that. But we service all of Broward County. So if anybody is new to the neighborhood, or if you have friends or family that have an individual with Down Syndrome, we are more than welcome, they are more than welcome to contact us. We're on, you know, every, you can Google us, Facebook, all of these different things. And then we provide resources and services, advocacy, educational workshops, social events for the kids to get together and the parents to have some kind of support that we do. So we provide a lot of service for our members and community with individuals with Down Syndrome. So we thank you very much.
Thank you.
Cheryl, can you, yeah.
Give me one more shot.
Cheryl, Cheryl, do you want to announce to everyone how much the donation was for?
We collected through our staff here.
Into the mic, please.
Into the mic.
I'm loud enough, I figure. We collected through our staff here 200, and Vice Mayor Kaczynski just raised it by another 100.
Mary.
Thank you.
Of course.
So this is one of our members, Gero, so we're going to take a quick picture. Who's got?
Are you ready?
No, no.
No.
They're open all the time.
Yes, of course you can.
Absolutely.
Here, come in. Yeah, come this way.
Let's face here.
Let's face this way.
Let's face here.
Hold this side, hold this side.
Go ahead, Gero.
There you go. Podium in the way.
Wait, can we see? Does it roll?
Oh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, awesome. Okay, next item on agenda is a presentation, a follow-up on a presentation we had a meeting or two ago regarding the facilities over in Green Meadows. And I want to thank you for going back, taking the feedback, and going back and making some updates to it. Appreciate it.
Hey, thank you. And thank you all. Good evening, everyone. My name is Heidi Rodriguez, as you guys know. And again, I'd like to thank you for having me back today. Tonight, we're going to be covering some of the feedback that we received, both from town council and from you guys, the public, the last time that we were here to present our Meadows Park building. And so what I'd like to do is, I'd like to run down the list of comments first, and then hone in on each of these individually. Up at the top, you guys asked us to look at other parks nearby, and to consider adding amenities for the horses. Specifically, you guys asked us to look at Sunshine Ranches Equestrian Park and Fishing Hole Park, which I'd like to add is one that I'm very familiar with, as it was designed by CPC architects. The second item is to consider using T111 in lieu of the tongue and groove ceiling that we have in the exterior pavilion. Third, is to move the fencing up to Phase 1 and build it up front, rather than leave it for the end, which would be Phase 2. And then four, you've asked us to evaluate the location of the building, specifically the proximity to the horses. Another point that was looked at is the look of the building. There was a lot of conversation about that the last time that I was here. And you guys asked us to design something that was a little bit more rural. And then lastly, to include side lighting for the safety of all of those that are going to be using the park after sunset. So up at the top here again, when we reviewed Sunshine Ranches, and these are pictures straight from this park, we noticed that this park is horse-friendly, it is pedestrian-friendly, it's got your low perimeter wooden fencing that you guys have all throughout Southwest Ranches. And then finally, it's got beautiful landscaping, and it is right by bodies of water. Then in reviewing Fishing Hole Park, that like I said, was done by us, it's got open grass areas, it's also a park that is very pedestrian-friendly, it's got your same perimeter fencing. And it's a very simple restroom. And I'd like to take a little bit of time here and kind of talk about the simplicity of this building. I'd like to ask that you guys are not deceived by the renderings that were presented the last time. We didn't design a fancy building. Okay, what you guys are going to be getting is very similar to this, it's just a little bit bigger. It is still CBS construction, which is block, it's your typical wooden trusses, and it's a metal roof, just like the one you guys have in this building, and like the ones you guys have in multiple parks. Meadows Park is not going to be any different. It's just articulated a little bit differently. So because we did this, when I went back in our server a few days ago, and I pulled our site plan, just to see what it is about this park that you guys like. This is, by the way, Fishing Hole Park. So what you guys have, I don't know if you can see this, but right in the center, that little restroom that has those black walls, that's the small restroom building. And then on the right, you've got the pavilion, it also has a septic drain field, and it's got sidewalks. Okay? Meadows Park is going to be just like that. The only difference is that the restroom and the pavilion are going to be merged into a single structure, rather than the two that we have in Fishing Hole Park. But there is always room for improvement, so I want to make sure to make clear today that your feedback and your feedback was all taken into account when we revisited the building. So what we're going to be doing is, we are going to be including a horse pen. Okay? You're going to see that later on in subsequent slides when I show some of the renderings. The second item that was asked to consider is the T111 versus the tongue groove, probably because it makes the building look a little bit more rustic, and it is likely going to be a little bit cheaper. So just know that the two options have been included in the set of drawings, so that you can get separate pricing for each, and then make a decision at that point. Three, moving the fencing up to Phase 1, not a whole lot to show here, except to let you know that this drawing, the drawing set has accounted for this modification, and we have brought it up to whatever is covered in Phase 1, which is what's going to be built up front, rather than leaving it for the end, so that the contractor knows that that needs to happen right away. Number four is to evaluate the location of the building and the proximity to horses. I do want to say that before, that in the previous presentation back in April, we had taken a look at the location of the building within the site, and it was very carefully considered. So the town was pretty diligent about going over and having a conversation with the neighbor, just to see what his feelings were. He's right there, he's adjacent to the property where we're going to be building this. And so the neighbor stated that his property is not going to be used around the clock. So you're not going to have horses that are going to be permanently there, how do I say, bothered by the noise from the building adjacent to it. The town also presented the building and the concept that we have, and there were no concerns from this individual. But because there is always room for improvement, you're going to hear me say that a couple times throughout the presentation, we will be installing privacy screening in the form of landscaping right around here. And that's going to help screen the building, screen the horses on the other side, as well as mitigate noise. Then there was the look of the building. You asked us to look into a different design, and so what we did, by the way, there was also a comment, that the building looked like it might fit better in, for Lauderdale than it does Southwest Ranches. So what we did is, we went back and we evaluated some of your main buildings in Southwest Ranches. And before I talk about some of the things that we modified, I do want to point out that there were traits and elements within our design that had already been incorporated, and that are very similar to what you guys have here, particularly in Rolling Oaks Barn, which is the one that's up on the screen right now. This is a low facade profile, so this means that this building is probably, what, 15, 20 feet? That's very similar to what you're going to be getting in Meadows Park. You've got a cover canopy, which is the same thing that we're going to have with our pavilion. Kind of tough to see with the lights on, but these are arched beams, which is the same language that we have used in our building. And then this building also has the veneer around the columns. In this scenario, it's a brick pattern, in Meadows Park, it's going to be a stone pattern, which has already been used in other buildings. So this is what we've come up with. On the bottom, you have the previous design, just for comparison. It's also been labeled, in case there's any confusion. And as you can see, the columns were flush with the arches in the previous iteration. The windows were probably a little bit too modern, and so were the light fixtures. It's kind of tough to see, but there's one over on this corner, there's one in the middle, and there's one over on the right, and that has been provided for the safety of pedestrians that are going to be parking right in front of this building, and they're going to come on after sunset. So the new design is going to have paneling below the windows, very similar to Rolling Oaks. That paneling is also going to extend over to the framing of the windows, to give it a little bit more of a rural look. Okay? The color of the roof has also been changed. We're actually now matching the color of this particular building. You guys have used this gall vellum before, and you have it in other facilities. But just know that we have provided that as an option, you still can very well use a different color, as long as it is from the list from the manufacturer. So that has been accounted for in the set of drawings. Moving on to the next image, I spoke about the fact that the arches were previously flush with the columns. So what we've done in the new iteration is that we recessed those arches a little bit further. And what that helped us do is articulate the building a little more, and play with the different tonality and the color scheme that we have used here, which are all the neutral tones that you guys have in Southwest Ranches. Additionally, what we did is, we've added texture to this stucco. And the purpose of doing this is to kind of make it look like paneling, possibly like wood paneling. The only thing is, we don't want to use wood, because then you've got to maintain it, it becomes a hazard, you can pull those panels off and potentially hurt somebody. So we're going to do it with long-lasting durable materials. In this case, it's going to be stucco, and it's going to have the horizontal lines to mimic that paneling. On the wall sconces, which are these fixtures that are mounted on the columns, what we've done is, these were a little bit too modern, so we've chosen something that's a little bit more rural, and it mimics what you have in Rolling Oaks. And then, like I said earlier, the addition of the horse pen is going to be located right on the west of the building, actually adjacent to where the other horses are going to be. Lastly, one change we've done is to give this building a little bit more character, we have incorporated your logo. This picture is actually that logo right there. And then, just like I said before, the tongue and groove, you guys still have the option. I did have conversations with town council regarding the different scenarios here with the tongue groove versus the T111. They are installed in your facility, so both of these have held up very well. And there probably will be a bit of a slight difference in cost. And as you can see, the T111, it's got more of a rural look. The other one is a little bit cleaner, so it's going to be entirely up to you guys to pick that out. As of right now, like I said in the beginning, we did account for both in the set of plans. So what's going to happen now is, the contractor, once this project goes out to bid, will provide pricing on both, and at that point, you guys can make that selection. Same thing with, you know, things like color. The color is not set in stone. We've chosen earth tones now as a basis of design, as a starting point, but there's nothing that says that we can't make modifications. We have accounted for these variations in our set. There was another comment that I do want to bring up. It was purposely left out of the presentation because we don't have direction yet, so maybe this is something that we can touch on today, and that is the location of the water valve to connect the hose to. That would be a very easy fix for us. Right now, it is outside. I know that there were concerns with people coming and stealing the water. If we want to move that up to the interior part of the building, we can very well add that to the chase, which is that centerpiece in between the two restrooms. And then you can plug your holes and leave your storage open to be able to access that water. So for us, it doesn't really make a difference, we just need to know. Thank you. This concludes the presentation.
Good, great. Thank you. Really appreciate the work that you all put in there. I wonder if, just as far as that water issue, if, I don't know, if you or December have some issues, have some comments on that item?
Well, we have had an issue previously, and we've monitored that, and since we've corrected that issue, December, you can come up if you have anything to add to it. We haven't had the utilization that we were having.
Right.
So I think that it was a, we'll call it a one-off, hopefully, but, December, I'll let you address that issue. Go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. I'm glad that you asked about that. Of course, we always want to provide a hose bib. Gosh, you know, you really need those things. But we have had problems at the Equestrian Park and at the Rolling Oaks Barn. Members of staff that have just been out doing inspections have caught people out there taking water. We've had high water bills at the Equestrian Park, as we've discussed many months. So far, we're doing well, but you never know when those things will rear up again. It's just like every other thing. Once you kind of get a handle on it, you need to always watch it, and I would be concerned. That being said, it's never been a conscious decision, as far as I was concerned, to say, no water outside. You know, we certainly can try it, and there are ways to limit others' use of it who don't have tools, because you just take the handle off of the spigot, so that, you know, somebody needs a tool in order to turn it on. Anyway, we'll handle it. We'll figure something out with that.
Okay. So are, I know at the Equestrian Park, there are valid uses for residents to use that for the horses. And I'm wondering if there are any really valid uses to have that available to, I'm not saying there is or isn't, I'm just asking the question.
As a trailhead facility, which meets the requirements of, some of the requirements of our grants, we do need to provide water, but we don't have to provide a hose. We need to provide potable water for people to drink, for them to give their animals, you know, but there's no requirement for us to provide a hose.
Got you.
As far as the Equestrian Park, it's an Equestrian Park, you've got riding arenas there.
Right.
People do like to hose down their horse to help them cool down.
Hundred percent.
And you could expect to see people riding in that park.
Yeah.
It's not inconceivable, but we're not building a wash rack at this point.
Right.
And we didn't put any equestrian facilities into the grant commitments, so yes, riders will be welcome, and we want them to feel at home and comfortable, but, you know, a wash rack isn't planned at this point.
Okay. Well, I know that was kind of one of your, I think that was your thought on there. Do you have any thoughts?
Well, December, I was, my daughter used to live in plantation, and they had a problem with the residents using the water all the way around the building to wash cars, to do, you know, personal use. So what they ended up doing was, they put locks on them, not, they didn't take the handles off, because the landscape company still needed the water for things. So they put lockable covers over the spigot part where you screw the hose in, that solved their problem. Now they have one place where everybody can go wash their cars. So maybe the compromise is, put one outside. If we have an event where we're expecting a lot of equestrians and we're going to need water, take it off for the weekend. Otherwise, you're protected.
I feel, you know, I think we can explore a lot of different options where that's concerned. And I do want to say, though, that that location is so visible, and now that we've trimmed down the bushes and we're going to keep them, you know, we want to be able to see in, it's a beautiful vista from the, you know, from the start anyway. But I feel like it's a ripe area for all kinds of people who see opportunities for their own personal use there that aren't necessarily park-related.
Right.
So we do have to be watchful about that. So those suggestions are good, and we'll definitely do whatever we need to do to kind of control it while still offering an amenity to the public.
Great. Perfect.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, December. All right, any other council comments?
I got a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
I have a question. You showed the fencing on one of these pages, I forgot which one. It's got the one with the horse, horses in it. And anyway, the fencing showed a white PVC split horse fencing. Is that what you're specing for, to surround the park with? Yeah, I think, I see that as a very big problem.
Yeah.
It should be like chain link.
Yeah.
Right.
All the way around, because that is, A, is very expensive, it's a lot of maintenance, and you ask anybody who's had to pressure clean the Rolling Oaks Park.
Right.
And what that costs, and, you know, it's too easy to get in and out of that.
Yeah.
You know, if I can fit through those little, anybody can.
They're easier to climb.
More for decoration.
Yeah, so I think chain link is where we need to go with, and along with the gates.
I just got up here to say that's definitely something that we can explore. Is there a height that you guys would be considering if we were to go with chain link?
What's at a Country Estates, five feet, six feet?
At least six, I think seven or eight. It's taller than me.
Really?
No.
That's tall.
Yeah, it's pretty high, that I'm thinking about. Six, six to eight feet.
Just to add to the height, just to, I'm going to have December answer the question on the height of the fencing.
Along Southwest 190th, it's a five-foot fence. Along Griffin Road Corridor, it's a six-foot fence. And we do have chain link at Country Estates Park. It doesn't really keep people out, and we do have the same kind, we used, we specced, we asked CPC to spec the three-rail fencing, because that was what was selected for the Equestrian Park in 2002, and also for the Rolling Oaks Park. So we have maintained that, miles of that fencing for years. I've never had to replace a whole bunch of sections. It's been relatively easy to maintain, although you do have to wash it, and that's in our contract, that facilities maintenance. So it's not secure, but I don't really trust any fence to keep things secure. I've had to repair sections of the chain link, not in the last couple of years, but at Country Estates, because people cut to get in there. And I've been fencing off areas and having people, you know, residents along the roadway saying, you're not going to keep me out of there, like kids and stuff like, so, you know, security is, you know, something that's good to aim for, but I don't think we're ever going to really achieve it. And that's a lot of fencing.
Yeah. Mayor, if I can add too, what we would, what we could also do is propose maybe the decorative type of fencing on either Griffin, or, you know, wherever it's preferred, but also have an add alternate for chain link, so that we can secure maybe the boundary areas of it, or the sides of face dikes, or what have you, and come up with a plan that looks good, but also provides some security. Keep in mind, though, also, as December just alluded to, we do have some parks that are totally wide open, so.
Yeah, and, you know, my, we do want it to be secure as much as it can be, but on the other hand, this is kind of the entrance to the town, and I'm a little concerned about a chain link fence being, that's your first view.
Right.
So.
Yeah, but then, I agree with you on that.
Yeah.
There's got to be maybe a blend.
Yeah, maybe.
But on the other hand, I can see where that's going to be a hangout spot.
Yeah, yeah.
At night.
Right across from the gas station.
Yeah.
Yep.
And it may not be, that's, may not be what we're trying to shoot for here.
Hundred percent. Yep.
Yeah, I see the other parks in neighborhoods that have the split rail type PVC fence. So to me, it's not as attractive a nuisance as this is right out on the main roads.
Yeah.
I'd be more comfortable with a higher-security fence.
All right, any other council comments? All right, let me open up to the public. Any public comments? Yeah.
A couple of things. The owners of the Donut Hole, is that the elderly couple still?
No.
Okay. Okay. The, we're going to be renting that pavilion out, and we're going to get people
A couple of things. The owners of the Donut Hole, is that the elderly couple still?
No.
Okay. Okay. The, we're going to be renting that pavilion out, and we're going to get people who have no concept as to the care, feeding, or respect towards horses or anything else, and putting it where you're going to put it, 25 feet from their fence line, is an abomination to the horse community. Does not matter that they're not going to have that many horses there at that time. What about the next owner? Are we going to accept the liability of people going and throwing rocks at the horses, or forcing the owner of that property to stable the horses while the party is going on with their loud music and everything else that's going to go in there for their birthday parties and everything else, 25 feet from their property line? Or are we going to have the noise ordinance in effect there, where we can drive by, find the noise, and have them shut down right then? Because it's 25 feet from the property line of a residence. It is a terrible place to put it, an assault to the equestrian community where you're going to put it. There is other places to put it in the park that will also serve the five acres. I suggest that you put it there, and not where you're going to put it, because that is an insult to the equestrian community where you're going to put it, because you're saying, "Oh, the little kids can throw rocks at the horses, we don't care." We're not thinking ahead. What we're thinking about is what is nice and convenient for those that are designing the park at the moment. Thank you.
Mary Gay Chapels, and I live on the other end of that road. Noel is absolutely right. That's the worst place in the world to put it, but I have to make a statement. I sat his chair for 18 years on the Parks Board, and COVID hit, and the couple that lived there, and we had always wanted to purchase that property, and when COVID hit, evidently those people passed away. I was not aware of it. I was no longer on the Parks Board, and I was told that they let the town know that it was available, and I guess the town wasn't interested, and so that property was sold to somebody that put a barn there. So now, we have to consider that in the middle of our park is a resident, and it's a narrow strip of property. So to put that building, if it were just a bathroom, that would be one thing, but it's a pavilion, and it'll be used for parties and kids, or gathering places, or whatever. It is the wrong place to put it. Absolutely should not go there, because they're saying it's not going to bother their horses right now, but they don't know what it's going to be, and when it becomes, then it can't move it. Then it exists, then they have to live with it, and we have to, and then we have to make a lot of rules in order to use it. So avoid all of that and move it somewhere else. That doesn't mean you have to change all the plans, it just means you have to relocate it to another area. And as far as fencing is concerned, are they fencing in the whole property, or because it's, it's fenced now, not bad, it's falling down, but it doesn't matter? So are they just fencing in what they're building, or are they fencing in the whole area?
Great. Thank you, Gay.
That makes a difference.
Yep. Any other public comment? Seeing other comment, public comment closed.
I have one last comment, just looking at the layout and the map, and this was for the architect, Heidi, if the pavilion was turned 90 degrees, where the bathroom portion, where, the picnic portion is now facing Dyke Road, as opposed to open air, I mean, it looks like it can work by just turning the building. That would really buffer a lot of.
Right, right.
You could use the building as a buffer.
Yeah.
It's a good idea.
To consider that.
Right.
I had a question as well, though.
Hold on a second, let me just, Mary Ann, I thought I, we had.
I'm a little slow today, so, sorry.
Go ahead.
Regarding the water issue, and I've ridden at Treetops Park for 30 years, I've never seen cars washed there, but I'll tell you what can happen to a horse in the summer, they can have heat stroke, and you've got to get a hose with water on them fast, or you're going to lose the animal. Even with the dogs, the people walk, they get heat stroke, you've got to have one hose and one bib. I've never, the water is so heavy, I just can't imagine people carrying off that much water, okay? It just seems a little odd to me. But maybe security cameras, and we can say to people, "You will be fined if you've caught washing your car," but it's so imperative we have water for the animals. Lori mentioned that if a bouffant frog got in a dog's mouth, you have to rinse their mouth out right away, so there's many reasons to have that water there. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Sorry, I'm a little slow, too, but you're going to have people that have a party there, they're not going to know anything about a horse. They're going to have their kids running all over the heck, and, you know, a horse, unless you've got a bridle in your hand and you're carrying a saddle, they're friendly, okay? But if they think they're going to get ridden, they might shy away, where they're not naturally going to shy away from that fence. They're going to come over the fence, they see some kids, and kid's liable to do something really stupid, that he doesn't realize, you know, throwing a rock or his new BB gun he just got for his birthday, stuff like that, and all it takes is one time.
Thank you, Jim.
I apologize, Mr. Mayor, but I got to believe better in people than all these things. Has anybody ever reported a rock throwing at our park, a car being washed, or any of these things? I mean, I've been to the Equestrian Park barhouse, I've seen all sorts of birthday parties from princes and fairies and butterflies, I've never seen a misbehaved child. Our homeowners association has a petting zoo and a picnic, and y'all have all been to it. You know, there's horses and kids and petting zoos. I mean, I believe the best in people, unless y'all have had an overwhelming number of incidents of this kind of behavior, let's trust our residents. I've never seen a mis, I've seen loud birthday parties, but they're just kids having fun. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Any other public comment? Seeing none, public comment closed. I think, so, this is a big, Gary, I think you have a great idea, but I do want to, either Russell, or maybe you come up again, you know, that looks like a huge area, and why did we put that loca, it didn't, wasn't random that we put it there, we really have, really a very limited amount of places where we can put it, where we can protect the wetlands, where we can, you know, where it all fits. It's not like we could, we could put it all over the place. It's very limited. I don't know the details, like maybe somebody else can explain, but I think it's worth explaining that, that if we could move it easily, we would, but, but that there, we have a lot of restrictions.
In the initial presentation that we did back on April 11th, we did go into that, into great detail about the location and why we chose that location, and it is primarily because, for two factors. One is that we wanted to be able to service the five acres that the town owns and utilizes there for the country fair, for the farmer's market, and so on and so forth, but it's also because of the location of the wetlands, and they're depicted in, if you can pull that back up, it is limited to the, to the locations that we could actually place it. If it would have been simple, we would have chosen another place. That wasn't necessarily the ideal place to put it right up against the property. I understand the concerns, but it was because of the existing wetlands that are there.
Right, right.
Yeah, that's the one I wanted. All those places there shaded in a lighter shade of blue are wetlands. Well, for me, it's blue. I guess I'm colorblind.
Yeah, yeah, so you can see there that really the options are very limited, if we're going to have it close to those five acres where the carnival and all that is kept. So, so that's, that's why we're there, and that's, that's also why we talked about putting in the, the buffer for the additional foliage between it, so.
The bump out.
It was, it was a lot of thought to that. It's a valid concern. I do think that overall, in the ranches, we, certainly there's always examples, and some people come into the, from the ranches that don't necessarily live here, but I think we have a lot of respect for animals and horses here, and I think we know. And that's what I say, sometimes, sometimes others' folks come in from outside our town and don't, don't have that same, but, but I think with the buffer there, I think, I think we're in pretty good shape, but if we can, if we can improve it, I'm for that.
Mayor, and the item that Councilmember Jablonsky just suggested, I think is a very great idea.
Yeah, yeah, me too.
And I'll ask Heidi if that's something that is viable, is essentially turning it 90 degrees, so that the building itself buffers any kind of impact in the pavilion from the adjoining neighbor, if that's done. Obviously, it would bump, bump it out a little bit, but I don't know if that's something that you think is viable or not. I'd like to hear your thoughts on that.
Russell, I will say that it can be done. We originally oriented it like this, because we wanted to make sure that people that were driving on Griffin could see the pavilion. This is, this was discussed here in the original presentation before we even started the project. It can be oriented differently. It would change the civil plans, only because civil has already graded the site to accommodate for water runoff and the grading for the driveway.
So, just to be clear, then that would mean a significant cost increase in redoing some of these plans and everything else?
So the architecture of it would not have to be modified, but the civil plans would have to be modified, yes?
Noel, thank you, all right. Noel, Noel, we already had public comment.
I had a question about all this, though.
Yeah.
Are we assuming that we're having parties there? We haven't discussed that. I don't believe we have. Do we, every time we open a park, do we rent it out for parties?
Well, each park has their own rules, right? And they're, and they're different, they're different park to park, and so that certainly would be something we would need, we would send to the Parks Board for them, for their consideration and feedback, and what would be the rules for this park. But I would say that this facility, the way it's built, looks like it's designed to have, I don't know, parties or events.
Parties on Saturdays when we've got the farmer's market in, or limit parties to Sunday?
That would be, that would be, that would be the parks.
That's the discussions that need to happen.
Yes, yes, I agree.
We're making a lot of assumptions about kids throwing rocks from parties, so, and noise and all sorts of other things. We haven't discussed whether we're going to even have parties there yet.
Yep, yep.
Mayor, if I could just say one other thing about this. So tonight, what we're really talking about is the design, right? And so what's important for us to decide tonight is the actual design of the building. Some of those other items we can talk about at another time, we can bring that forward at another time.
Right.
But I think it's important for us, if we want to get this building built, with the commitments that we have from the American Rescue Plan commitments, that we have to have the encumbrances for this building by the end of this year, I think it's important for us to start looking at moving forward with this project.
Right. I agree, I agree. I think it's a great project. I'm frankly very excited about it, you know, if we can bring it to the Parks Board, you know, look at another location or things like that, I mean, we want to get more feedback, but I think we need to move this forward because of that. Our timeline is, is set, and we've got to, you know, we've got to, we've got to move, or we may lose the opportunity to do it at all.
Yeah.
All right. So this is a presentation, I don't think there's any vote associated with this, so I think we're good. Heidi, thank you so much, really appreciate the work on this. I guess we'll, we'll look at it, coordinate, and see if there's any, any additional adjustments that we want to.
We don't necessarily need a vote, but I would like council consensus on the design that you've seen tonight, with the modifications that we've made, that you're, you're happy with that design, satisfied with that design.
I am, I'm very pleased with how it's come out.
I'm good.
Yeah, Mayor, I think they did a great job.
Yeah, I think we have it. Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, we have one final presentation this evening. Julio, related to our code, has, you know, we've had a lot of discussions here in the last six to 12 months related to code and different issues there, and, and to Julio's credit, he's been listening and obviously providing feedback, and he's taken all that, all those conversations, and put together a, kind of a new view towards, towards code and code violations, and appreciate you bringing this forward to us and presenting it to us, Julio.
Thank you, Mayor, and a good evening, Mayor and Council, to the residents. First and foremost, I want to thank you all for providing me with this opportunity to present these ideas to you. Now, the purpose of this presentation is to propose a change to the department name and propose procedural changes. I stand before you today with a goal of enhancing the effectiveness and efficiency of our department's operations. It's a goal fueled by the principles of progress, adaptability, and service to the community. This concept stems from an effort to fulfill residents' requests to provide a more personalized engagement with our department. Tonight, I'd like to propose a transformative shift in the code department from traditional code enforcement to a more collaborative approach, code compliance. In our current model, the term code enforcement often evokes images of punitive measures and adversarial interactions, and while necessary in certain situations, this model may not suffice to address our evolving community. We find ourselves in a pivotal moment that calls for fostering compliance through communication and education. The transition from code enforcement to code compliance represents more than just a semantic change, it's a fundamental shift in mindset, a mindset that prioritizes prevention over punishment, cooperation over confrontation. It's about bringing the community together and creating a culture of compliance that benefits all parties involved. Now, let's not forget the core purpose of our department, which is to safeguard the well-being and prosperity of the community, maintaining property values, and maintaining the rural lifestyle. By embracing the principles of code compliance, we reaffirm our dedication to this cause and put, and position ourselves as advocates for positive change. To accomplish this objective, we should refine our code enforcement strategy. The proposed adjustment involves a new initiative wherein code officers will seek to contact the property owner or contractor before issuing a notice violation. This new initiative can be accomplished through various means, such as visiting the property owner in person, or contacting them via email or phone if their contact details are available. The primary objective of this interaction is to provide them with comprehensive information regarding the potential violation, and to ascertain the time they may need to rectify the violation. This approach should not only allow the violator to thoroughly understand the violation, but it also allows us the ability to provide feedback to the complainant, and in many cases, expedite the turnaround time for compliance. It should also help maintain an amicable relationship between neighbors. One of the priorities will be to ensure code issues are addressed consistently with town policy regarding proactive versus reactive approaches, and state law pertaining to anonymous complaints, as amended by Senate Bill 60. The town administrator and town attorney shall be consulted on any code items we encounter with mitigating circumstances to, to determine a preferred course of action. Our department will attempt to bring the parties together to facilitate discussions of possible solutions prior to scheduling a case for a hearing. Now, in alignment with our commitment to upholding code standards and fostering professional development, another initiative involves incentivizing our code officers to pursue further training opportunities through the Florida Association of Code Enforcement, commonly known as FACE. In collaboration with our town administrator, we've developed a concept where the town will subsidize a portion of the cost associated with obtaining further certifications and training. FACE, the organization to provide certifications for code officers, also organizes annual conferences, which offer vital information and updates on new legal changes, diverse municipal approaches to various violations, and impending issues that could have an impact on the town. For example, short-term rentals, dealing with hoarders, how to do damage assessment, et cetera. These courses also provide networking opportunities where code officers can get together with other code officers from other municipalities and brainstorm on any code issues. Now, for any residents wondering what this cost could be, you're looking at a cost of 550 to about 750, depending on when you register for the annual conference, and that's going to be per officer. So any other expenses, such as lodging, transportation, food, that's still going to be on, on each individual officer, so the only, so the difference here is the town would be subsidizing the cost of signing up for the course. Now, lastly, I'd like to address concerns regarding our lighting code, commonly known as the dark sky ordinance. Lately, we face challenges regarding the enforceability of this code, particularly regarding glare violations. Our town planner, Jeff Cadums, is aware of this shortfall and is collaborating with the comp plan board to rectify it. They're currently in the process of engaging a lighting engineer to assist in amending our code. In the meantime, I'd just like to In the meantime, I'd just like to kindly request any affected residents to bear with us as we work towards a resolution in amending our code. In closing, I urge this council and its residents to support our cause to make compliance not merely a mandate to be enforced, but a shared commitment to be upheld.
Very good. Thank you, Julio. Appreciate your work on that. You know, maybe you sit here, let's just talk through it a little bit and see if there's any thoughts. I, you know, I'll just say, from my perspective, that code compliance is really what we're all about. And what we really want is, is for people to be able to comply with frankly, a minimum of enforcement, a minimum of fines, a minimum of coming in to see a magistrate or anything like that. And, you know, and that's frankly, the way I've always dealt with my neighbors is, you know, sit down and talk to them and just say, listen, this is, you know, what can we do? Let's kind of work this out and figure out something in the middle. And so, I think, I think it's the right direction. I support where you're going. I welcome any other comments from the other council members.
Well, I attend a lot of the code meetings now that, since I've retired, which maybe you might want to join us every now and then.
I'll try to do that.
Soon. But the code department really, most people don't realize this, and I'm sure there's people that are going to say I'm wrong, but they really go out of their way to give people time to come into compliance. And that's really the key, and it's, it's the pushback that, no, they don't want to do that. And they don't realize just how, just how bad that can turn into, what that can turn into. And I gotta say, they do, they do give people, I've seen many instances where code cases have never, have never come to the magistrate level because people comply.
Yeah.
You know, they do what they're supposed to do. And, you know, and stuff like that, and it gets monitored by our code department. They do, they do a pretty good job on that.
Great. Thank you, Gary.
I just had a question for Julio. Where'd you go? I like the concept. I mean, it is all about compliance. It's not, code should never be punitive for the sake of punishing people. These aren't crimes. But, and I like the idea of the additional training and collaboration with other code compliance organizations. But, I know how you guys operate today. What are you going to do differently under your new model? How will you address the residents differently than, except if one neighbor calls on the other, what's different?
Great question. So, the main difference is just initiating that contact, that communication beforehand. You know, lots of times, we've experienced where we'll finally meet the property owner and their response is, not that they're not willing to comply, but they didn't even quite understand what the violation was.
Right.
So, by initiating that contact early on, you know, they'll have that information upfront and we can already make that initial contact to where we understand whether or not they do want to comply, if they want to challenge it, then that also makes it easier for us to expedite the process. But in cases where they want to comply, they'll have the information upfront, we can explain in detail what would need to be done in order for that violation to be corrected. So, it's just the initial contact as well as before it goes to hearing, you know, almost like an ultimatum, listen, this is your last opportunity. If you can't make this happen, we have to go forward with a hearing. So, that's the main difference that's going to be implemented with this.
Thank you.
Julio, real quick, before you sit down, if you would, I want to say thank you to you and thank you for the town for revamping this. I also sit through the code hearings and to be able to address these problems before they come, before the magistrate is a wonderful idea. And I really appreciate your commitment to it and your staff's commitment to this. I think it'll be a good thing for the town. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
David. Thank you. Julio, I think the ideas of making it a more amicable approach at the inception, at the beginning of the violation is something that makes us more rural, keeps, keeps folks out of here. And interestingly, I actually had this as one of my campaign platforms in 2016. And, but mine was not involving the code like you have. I was just like, well, maybe the residents should talk first, but I like the way you are approaching it. It's kind of a modification of what I liked, what I suggested, but it's, it's to keep people away from getting a hammer. And that's what I want to, that's what I want to avoid. And the training aspect, code officers need to be sufficiently trained. I think that's imperative for our town. So, I like the general concepts of what you've got going on now.
Thank you.
Yeah, any, I also am pleased with the training side. I think that'll help everybody. I don't have any concerns there. Just let me call that out. Any concerns from that standpoint? Yeah, no, I think, I think we're good. All right, let me, let me open it up to the public. Yeah, Laurie.
I'm just curious about the cost, because I believe if I, when I read the budget, there was a $40,000 or $50,000 incentive in code enforcement's budget. And I asked the former town administrator, what are you paying them to find people? Because it didn't make sense. And I was told by Andy that what that was is incentivize them to go to the classes and I guess it was a reward. I don't know if it was additional monies or something. Maybe Russell can explain, because I thought they had the money in their budget. I don't think you spent it.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You know, if, if like, if they got like a CPA or a certain whatever, that they got rewarded with an increase in salary or something, something like that. But I just wonder if their budget doesn't have enough money in it already to cover it because you're $800,000 short. So, you know, maybe they already have the money.
Jim Lasky, Southwest 188th Avenue. Mr. Medina, I don't want to become public enemy number one, but $500,000, did I hear you right? Oh, how much was the course?
500?
I apologize. I apologize profusely. Richard, next to me, said a couple hundred thousand more. I just, we just don't hear things so good sometimes. But anyway, now that we have that laugh and we're asking for money, we, we have an incinerator we're facing and we need to talk about a few bucks for that fight because that's coming, big time. And when we can get going and we can start doing it, all right. See you later.
Richard, you can wipe the bus tracks off you.
Good evening. I'd like to commend Julio for doing his job, trying to improve the way that he's doing his job. And I will donate the $500 that he needs and I will also, and I will also offer my property for all of your meetings for free. Okay?
Okay. Mike, can you please state your name and address for the record, please?
Miguel Rodriguez, 4680 Voluntar Road, Southwest Ranches.
Thank you.
Cielo Farms.
Thank you.
Mary Ann Allen, Mustang Trail. Code enforcement, we had a few issues with it and we worked it all out. I was really thrilled. One of our residents had problems with dumping on a weekend. I don't know, it was like 40, 50 dump trucks of fill coming in on a weekend. And usually, if it comes on a weekend, nobody knows about it. There are more signs all around the ranches with fill permits. Yay, that's a really positive result of our efforts last year. With code, let me tell you what happened with the last administration, not this administration. There was a woman that had a horse farm and next to her, millionaires bought in, were redeveloping their land, and they didn't like the smell of her horses. They didn't like the look of the horses. So, you know what they did? They had code sent out there and that poor woman had to build a privacy hedge for the millionaires. I don't want to see our code persecuting our farms. And the more millionaires move in, the more this is going to happen. I'll be speaking on this during public comment, but I wanted you to hear about what actually happened to that woman. And there's other things that happened as well. So, depending on who's standing in front of us, you guys have been super preserving, protecting our lifestyle. But when those things change, I get scared because the last administration was one of the worst that I've seen, and I'm going to speak on some of that. And I thank all of you for your efforts in preserving, protecting and promoting our equestrian agricultural and rural lifestyle. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, folks. John Garrati, 162nd Avenue. This is a topic of code enforcement. It's been a hot button for a long time in this town. Oops. I happen to sit in every single code hearing. I kind of made it my hobby. One of the, one of the things I observe is a lot of manipulation from you guys. Not going to name names, because we're not going to do that tonight, but we all know what we do. I've repeated this many, many times and it's, it's not a way to maintain a rural community. You know, we, we are so unique out here, right? A lot of you, a lot of you guys smirk and grimace when I speak and it's okay. It's totally understandable. But what I do is I try and solve problems. In any business, you want to come to a solution, right? We don't want to weaponize our code department. It's been, it's happened many, 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 many times. So, the, the fact that he's stepping up and trying to change something, let the code department work as a code department. Let's stop the manipulation from, hey, I'm going to make the complaint and let's circumvent that it's anonymous and it's not, and you put your name on it and the councilman put, I've been a victim of that by a councilman. I mean, come on. So, bottom line here, guys, I've discussed what we do as a town with Sebastian, town in, up in Indian River County, Vero Beach. They thought I was nuts. They're like, Steve, you just left the bar? I'm like, dude, this is what we do here. So, I too signed up for code enforcement courses. They're not as simple as they sound. It's a little meticulous. FACE is a big deal. They get a break on cost. I had to pay more, but it's a very, very, very important thing to have as, as a problem solver. You guys have got to stop getting into these lawsuits and all this bad karma with these neighbors and all these wars we got going on. He's the face of our town. That gentleman right there is the first thing that many people meet as their, hey, welcome to Southwest Ranches, here's your code violation. That's all I have. Thank you.
Anyway, but Julio is charming, I have to tell you. At least if he gives you a violation, hi, welcome to town, he is charming. Anyway, I think Julio, left on his own, does very well. And I think he works over time at trying to make people comply when there's problems, including myself. And I'm not so easy to get along with when he wants me to cut a hedge down or a tree. So, I think you're on the right path. I think he's on the right path in trying to do more resolutions instead of sending them directly to the gallows. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary Gay.
Rick Cormier, 5800 210 Terrace. Regardless of, you know, my opinion on certain rules or what have you, I've worked, I'll say worked, I've dealt with Julio for five, six years now. He doesn't have an easy job. But one thing I could tell you about Julio is he makes a lot of effort to build relationships with people. And I've went running out of Davie a couple times, you know, personally, not with my business or what have you, but, and what makes Southwest Ranches unique for me and why I want my kids to grow up here and their kids to grow up here is because of the community. And, you know, I would very much agree with, you know, some of the proposed proactive type relationship building and working with the community approach, because that's the community that I want to live in and it's not a lot of other communities around here. And I want to say thank you to Julio for everything he does for us out there in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none, public comment. Any other public comment?
Right to the public?
No, for this, on this item. Seeing none, public comment closed. Yeah, I want to echo that. Julio, you do an amazing job. And, and I've always said, it's one of the toughest jobs in town. And so, we appreciate your dedication, the dedication of your staff and how you treat our residents. It hasn't always been that way and some of us remember when it wasn't that way. And so, really appreciate the work that you and your staff do. Thank you. I think the proposal is definitely in the right direction. Would definitely support it. Any, any final comments, any concerns? I think you're on the right track, Julio.
Mayor, if I could, real quick.
Yeah, sure.
This is a great concept. It'll keep the council members out of the middle of things. If a resident has a complaint, there's a simple way now that they can complain or say to Julio. They don't have to call the councilman, councilman get involved because they're afraid of their neighbors. This can get worked out, all right? But the, I do want to say that the councilmen do have an obligation to the residents, that if there is a complaint, you know, they need to listen to that complaint. And now, we can bring it to Julio and get it solved in a more equitable way. So, I appreciate that, Julio. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. All right, awesome. I think we're good. Thank you, Julio. All right, public comment.
Mayor, we have several speakers tonight, starting with Mike Rodriguez, John Garrati and Jim Lasky.
Okay, I'd like to address the reason why I'm here. My name is Miguel Rodriguez, as I mentioned before. I'm the founder of Southwest Ranches Voice of the People. Today, I bring to you, to your attention, serious concerns regarding the recent appointment of Michael Garcia as the new town magistrate by town attorney Keith Poliakoff.
That's an item on the agenda, so I will have public comment when that item comes up. If you could please wait for that item, yes.
Okay, no problem. I just wanted one.
Yeah, it's a separate topic, go ahead.
Yeah, one question for Julio. So, if he goes to a resident and the resident would like to speak to Attorney Poliakoff about what the issue is, will that happen? Is that allowable?
You can ask the question and we'll, after, after public comment, we'll address it. Thank you.
John Garrati, followed by Jim Lasky, filed by Mary Ann Rayo Amador.
John Garrati, 162nd Avenue. Forgot to say hi to my wife. Hi, Laudy. She always watches me on YouTube. I'm a star like you guys with your PSA. But I, I got a lot of things to say, but, you know, I, I want, I want our town to succeed. I want our town to be that pillar of excellence. These, these equestrian folks that live out here, these agricultural businesses, residences, these folks were here when this was the Everglades, when there wasn't a single shopping center out here. These folks had to travel to University Drive to buy a gallon of milk. I didn't have that. I moved in here 01, so I'm not, you know, I'm not that aged. I'm old now, I'm 49, but I bought my house when I was 27. So, if we don't look out for those original residents with the mentality of, I want to have a rural, slightly different, non-confrontational type of lifestyle for my family, for my well-being. A lot of people move out here to have a little more sanity, to have peace and quiet, to enjoy our dark skies, as they will, right? How do we, how do we approach that as a town? I'm running for District 3 council seat. More important than any election to me is for everybody to just take, take it easy. Let's relax. Listen, we're, we're in a tough world right now. This whole thing of coming after everybody and, you know, this social media nonsense, I am so glad I'm disconnected with that. I peer in it every once in a while, but it's kind of comical. It's like, come on, you know? My own wife, she gets on there and she goes, bananas. You all see it, you know? So, it's, it's, it's not.
Excuse me, excuse me. Can we?
Oh, sorry.
I apologize for interrupting.
Oh, no worries. She's going to get mad at me for what I just said, but it's okay.
Yeah, we'll put some more time on one second.
No worries, I appreciate it. But the, the whole, the whole concept of the town of Southwest Ranches, the reason why this charter was founded and all, that whole goal, right? You guys, some of you guys are here for all that, is for the embrace, for that happiness. You know, I sound like a cliche right now, but you know what? There's no other town like this. I mean, there's something similar up in Indian River County, but it's far away. This isn't, we don't live up there, we live here. And, you know, I go up there and I discuss some, I'm really tight with a lot, I'm at the town attorney, I'm like, look at this. at this. I'm talking to the town attorney in Indian River County. But they don't, they don't do some of the things we do. We're not acting as a town as we should. You know, we have a composting issue, right? We have, we have, not an issue, let me rephrase. We have to do something to get to a certain number to recycle. Composting is one of those ways that we should do it, right, as part of a zero-waste plan. But not to dig too deep into that, I've seen our own code enforcement department pursue nurseries that are composting, which is an agriculturally protected activity, and then they got to hire a lawyer, and here comes 100 grand, and for what reason? All we're trying to do is work, right? So not to go on and on and on, but I could do that if you guys want me to. We just got to do better. We can never say we're perfect, because we're not. We got to do better. Every time you guys get in front of your seats, you're representing me, you're representing your family, and we got to do better. Every time we say, I'm a council member, I'm the mayor, it's not just the people sitting in here. It's YouTube and every other little kid that knows, oh, wow, Southwest Ranches, it's a beautiful place. But that's all I got. Thank you, guys.
Jim Lasky, followed by Mary Ann Rayo Amador, followed by Mary Michelle.
I'm good, Pat.
Okay. Mary Ann Rayo Amador, followed by Mary Michelle, followed by Mary Ann Allen.
Good evening. Mary Ann Rayo, 4800, 195th Terrace. I have been very observant these past three months on this matter. It has become a disrespectful, inconsiderate, hateful, and some like competition-type subject. And because of it, it has lost focus on the actual issue. So to answer the question asked so rudely the last time I was here on April 11th, what the heck does this have to do with all of us here? Well, on October 12th, Councilmember Kozensky motioned for an Israeli resolution that was seconded by Councilmember Hartman. It was quickly passed and funded by taxpayer money. Some of us, some of these funds went to the Israeli occupation force. It's understandable to want to help, especially so soon after October 7th. But since then, much has transpired. We are all very much aware of actual events and the fact that this is a colonization project, and obvious to anyone with logic and morals that this is a Palestinian issue. Another fact is that we did fund this extra resolution, knowing that every year, all cities, counties within Florida are already tied to Israeli bonds. According to broward.org, as of October 13th, we'd hold 5 million in bond investments with taxpayer money. That goes directly to their economic growth, infrastructure, free healthcare, free education, social security, along with their military and veterans' help. This is required by law due to AIPAC's deep lobbying within our government. Florida is one of 14 states bonded to these. Palm Beach has invested the most of 700 million. Now think how big these investments have been from each city and county since 1951. We shouldn't be funding them if it's being used for an apartheid and now a genocide.
Apartheid is hate speech.
Now to you, Mayor. On February 22nd, you told us in front of everyone that you didn't know how you can help from all the way over here, but you were willing to listen. I took that very seriously, since you helped with the Israeli one. Then the very next day, you showed how biased and influenced you are by having someone call us and cancel the meeting. The reason you canceled was because someone was uncomfortable with some of the things said, yet failing to see how allowing the Israeli resolution without hearing us can also be uncomfortable. Either way, it's a council meeting. It's bound to get uncomfortable at times, but that doesn't excuse you for making biased decisions. Your words seem to me that it means nothing. You made it clear that you don't consider all your residents to have an equal voice here, and you have no problem ignoring your constituents that are taking this matter very seriously. It's clear that they are specific people here with influence on things, how things go. So maybe instead of getting defensive at residents, saying that there is an abuse of power or corruption, you should all look inward and ask, why has there been an increase of these accusations, at least from since I've been coming here, I've noticed? Why is it so hard to me?
Your time is up. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Mary Michelle, followed by Mary Ann Allen, followed by Richard Rem Charatar.
Mary Michelle, North South Saxon Circle. Before I begin, I would like to again caution this town not to further infringe on my First Amendment rights. I also caution its residents not to make slanderous and baseless accusations in reference to my intentions or beliefs. As the truth of Israel's assault and genocide of the Palestinian people finally starts to be allowed to seep into the mainstream media and consciousness, I again implore this town to rescind its unequivocal support of Israel and stand when decided justice and humanity. I would like to congratulate the City of Doral for their courageous decision to be the first city in Florida to unanimously pass a resolution calling for a permanent end to all hostilities. I would like to present this resolution to the Town Council for their consideration. It is my belief that if our citizens were educated on the history of the conflict, we could have an open and honest discussion, which would help bring about understanding and compassion. If anyone wishes to learn and discuss more, I am more than willing to have a conversation. As mentioned in the last meeting, it is true that the Congress has been rapidly signing bills in support of Israel and tamping down on First Amendment rights. The House of Representatives passed HR 894, which, if passed by the Senate and signed into law, would broaden the legal definition of antisemitism to include the targeting of the state of Israel. Speech that is critical of Israel alone will be considered hate speech. Seriously stop and consider what that means. United States citizens will be unable to criticize a foreign power. We, as a nation, do not allow such a restriction of free speech in regard to our own country, but the free speech to criticize a foreign power will soon be illegal if this bill is allowed into law. How did this come about? I believe that it is the duty of every citizen to look at the source of any candidate's funding, to see where their true allegiance lies. If that funding is coming from outside the town, state, or nation, you can be sure their allegiance is, and their priorities to the constituents are compromised. In regard to Israel's influence on American politics, I would like to attempt to give a brief overview of the American Israeli Political Action Committee, AIPAC, and how they have so strongly impacted both the U.S. internal and foreign policy. What is AIPAC? AIPAC has its roots in the American Zionist Committee for Public Affairs. It was founded as a lobbying group for the Israeli government in an attempt to manage the political fallout of Israel's 1953 massacre of dozens of Palestinians, most of them women and children, in the West Bank. The organization was renamed AIPAC in 1959. AIPAC splits its campaign donations almost equally amongst members of Congress in both Democratic and Republican parties. It has regularly galvanized almost every member of the U.S. Senate to sign letters in support of Israeli policies, including several wars in Gaza. U.S. lawmakers received over 58 million from AIPAC in the last election cycle alone. Members of Congress who expressed support for Israel during the first six weeks of its war on Gaza received an additional 125...
Mary Ann Allen, followed by Richard Rem Charatar, filed by Gloria Murphy.
May I present the Doral Resolution?
Thank you.
Mary Ann Allen, Mustang Trail. I have a very important topic to bring up to the town, and it is way overdue. Let me give you an overview from a resident that's been here for over 30 years. When I began my horse farm breeding operation, you could not get agricultural out here. You couldn't get agricultural for the love of money because Markham, who was extremely corrupt, was our property appraiser. And guess what they would do? They'd come out and you would fill out reams and reams of paperwork, and then they would make up reasons why you didn't qualify. This man, Markham, posted that he paid his own property taxes on his property, but it was just a computer entry. The newspapers covered it. That's how corrupt he was. We did not have agricultural until Lori Parrish became our property appraiser. She made sure that, for the first time, horse boarding was allowed as an agricultural pursuit. And that has been a friendly property appraiser's office through the transition with Marty Kiar. Marty Kiar has been one of our best friends and is very supportive of our farms. However, you have the sign there that says you have to preserve, protect, and promote. Most of this is lip service. You know why? We don't have an agricultural department in this town to help our residents. We don't have an agricultural department when our horse farm lady gets called by code, and she has to provide a partition of hedge to protect the millionaire. This has happened in the past. I'm not speaking hearsay. I've also seen other residents that were punitively, punitively, it's hard with only 23 minutes. Anyway, what I'm trying to say is, if we had an agricultural department, that department would be providing the paperwork to people. Here's how you apply for your agricultural. Here's what you have to do. Could have an animal husbandry thing. It's the first time you have a horse. Here's a pamphlet. Here's how you feed them. Here's how you take care of them. A lot of people don't have any clue. They want a horse, they want a pony, but they have no clue how to take care of them. Also, what plants to, what poisonous plants you have to avoid when you have a farm. There's so many things. I would ask this council, please, can you put this on the agenda for the next town meeting? I'd like to bring Fred Ziegel here from the Farm Bureau and people that can speak very, a lot better than me with only 17 seconds left. But it's really important, because if we're going to preserve the farms within the next five years, you're not going to have farms here. You may as well take the ranches off your logo, because it's all going to be Western. We have to do it now. Be preemptive. Protect our farms. Have a division that is, that has our backs. Thank you so much.
Richard Rem Charatar, filed by Gloria Murphy, and then Debbie, you're the final speaker.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and residents. I'd like to speak to you this evening about recycling and, you know, how important this is for us to reach 75% recycling by 2030. First of all, when recyclables are burned in an incinerator, it is much more of an environmental hazard than if it were landfilled. Landfilling ash is worse than simply, I'm sorry, landfilling ash is worse than simply burning. Transportation is not a significant factor in emissions and cannot justify incinerating nearby versus long-haul to landfills north of Broward County. Going from single stream back to dual stream, paper separated from bottles and cans, is a good way to have more marketable recyclables. And diverting organics from the destructive disposal in landfills and incinerators is the path towards zero waste. Organic should be treated as a recoverable resource, which can be composted on an industrial scale. It represents more than 50% when you combine residential and commercial organic waste. Back in 2023, the town made a proclamation that October was Zero Waste Month, and that would be recognized going forward. So recently, Debbie Green, Rose Albritton, myself, we have taken a course in zero waste, and that's planning. So what we need to do in town, since we now have an advisory board for zero waste, is that we need to adopt and model the guiding principles of zero waste as overarching goals for the community and all municipal and school operations. We need to develop a zero-waste plan as soon as possible that would include input from multiple stakeholders, including residents and town staff. We need to establish goals that meet or exceed the state's 2030 solid waste master plan, waste reduction goals. And we recommend short and long-term actions that address infrastructure policies, local and regional collaboration, education, and community engagement. We need to have, we need to plan town-wide compost services. And we need to provide a cost-benefit analysis on each waste reduction strategy under consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
Debbie, oh, sorry, you're next. No, you're sorry. Gloria, come.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm Gloria Murphy. I live on 164th Terrace in Southwest Ranches, and I love it here. And I've been living here for 30 years, and I feel like I live on a park. And most people living out here should feel like they live in a park, so I don't understand why we need so many parks. But anyways, that's not why I'm... I wanted to mention, last night's meeting was excellent on the incinerator issue. They did a great job, and I think we're really inspired now. But my main reason for talking tonight is just to mention, I didn't know if you were aware, but this month is National Military Appreciation Month, and let's hear it for our military.
Debbie Green. You know, we've shown a lot of consideration to residents who are watching these meetings on YouTube. The audience members aren't shown, holding pictures, holding cards throughout the meeting. I've sat an hour and 15 minutes, having to watch in front of me, papers being held in front of me. I asked very respectfully and asked to please put the papers down, that they were distracting to me. I didn't get a kind response. So I'm just asking you all to show the same consideration. I know it's not done purposely, but to show the same consideration to those sitting here, because we have a right as well to sit at our town council meeting without distraction. And I can't believe that not one of you that's sitting up there is focusing 100% on the issues and the speakers that are in front of you, or the issues you're discussing amongst yourselves, while there's a piece of your brain that is making an effort to overlook what is in front of you. So I'm just, I mean, to, following up on what Judge Cohen said at the last meeting, if people were here holding swastikas up in the front row, there'd be a different response. Thank you.
So, thank you for bringing that up, Debbie. So, the pictures cannot block somebody. If it's distracting the person in front of them, then you need to sit in the back. Do you understand me?
My picture is being held at shoulder height.
Clearly, clearly, it is, Mary? Mary? I'm telling you...
It's in the regulation size. They're held at shoulder height.
I'm telling you that you need to either move to the back, you either need to move the back, or you're going to need to be removed.
Okay. Again, like I said at the beginning, don't violate my First Amendment rights if you are now again, because it's clearly in your...
Mary, are you moving to the back?
Sure, I'll move to the back, because it's already documented. You guys just keep documenting more and more stuff when you're so...
All right. Quiet. Any further public comment? No further public comment. Public comment is closed. Any board reports this evening? Seeing none. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Good evening. Okay. I'm Rose Albritton. I chair the Rural Arts Board, and I'm also on the new board that I'm thrilled about, another zero-waste board. I'd like to go over the Rural Arts Board first, if I may, and that's about the photo contest, and I'm sure our liaison will be talking about that. The theme is Proud of Our Town, and it is due on, let me see, is it September 21st? I should have had that one out first. We also have a Halloween that the residents has asked us to, okay, it's September 9th, so all photos need to be in. And the simplest way I can tell you about a photo is, landscape to me is to turn your phone sideways. Councilman Hartman can go on about it, but that is what I do. You know, that is my logic to it. And we'd love to see all your animals, children enjoying the parks, the home, you know, your gardens, everything, anything that you feel proud about is most welcome. We also have, like I said, the Halloween. Residents has asked us about that, and the deadline for registration is October 18th, and we'll be judging your house. The spookier, the better. Okay, I'd like to go on to what the Parks and the Arts Board got together on, and that was sound... on, and that was soundproofing the barn. And the Parks Board did such a good job picking out samples for us to look at. And December came to the barn, and we picked it out, and I believe it's already up, right, December? I can't thank you enough. They're great. Anyway, so she works with us, Susan, our liaison, and the both of them make both our boards look good. So that's about all I have, except that I would like to talk, if I could, about thanking you for letting me, as Richard said, to enjoy that course. It was a little intimidating. There were people from around the world when I went on Zoom. I mean, we were on with India, Australia, you name it, we were there. And old timers from the United States that we gained so much knowledge about. And we are testing, we, we did our project, and we're going to have an exam pretty soon. So we be, should be through with this one about May 31st. And through all of it, I learned one thing, and that was they said nothing comes easy, nothing comes fast, and mistakes will be done at first. And you learn from them, and you gain the knowledge to go on and get the job done. So to the residents that call and say, thank you, what can we do? I thank them. For the ones that say, we need to do more, come join us. Thank you.
Thank you, Rose. Any other board reports? Seeing none. Council member comments?
I'll go.
Thank you.
Big surprise. Just a few things, just a couple of announcements I want to make, and then I'll keep it short. We have bingo at the barn this coming Saturday, so we're going to test out those panels. Are tickets still available December yet? And they can get them at the front desk or through you. Okay, good. Photo contest, Ms. Albritton already talked about that, so I won't belabor that. We have the mayor's chess challenge here at Town Hall on the 18th, correct? All right. All right, that one I'll let, I'll take. July 27th is hazmat at the barn, and we're starting something new on a pilot program here where we're going to have shredding there at 8:00 AM till 2:00 PM. And the prescription drug drop off from 10 to 2. The Davie Police Department will be there for that. And it's on July 27th, again, Saturday, and it's really convenient. And I urge everybody, this really goes to our zero waste initiative that we're taking. You turn in computers, DVD players, keyboards, mice, the mechanical kind, printers, scanners, radios, VCRs, any of that stuff that's been gathering dust in your garage for the last decade. You know, aerosol cans and paint batteries, this is important, car batteries and regular batteries, propane cylinders, fluorescent tubes, bulbs, cleaners, latex-based oil, gardening chemicals, pesticides, pool chlorine, tires, and used oil and filters. Most people try to put that out with the bulk, and it doesn't get picked up. This is the place to safely put it away. They, they upcycle it and recycle most of it. Like all the paint, most people don't know this, but all the paint that you turn in goes to a county program where they mix all the paint together and they create, like, I think it's four basic colors, and it's somewhere up in Coconut Creek. And they actually give it away, like every resident gets, can, is able to get like eight gallons of it or something like that on the program. But that's what happens to it. The stuff gets upcycled, so it doesn't get, doesn't end in a landfill. So I just wanted to make mention of that. And we have a new thing coming out called Supertots, and I'm going to let them, hand it off to the mayor and let him talk about it because he's the initiator of the program, so I'm not going to get into it. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Great. Thank you, Gary. Gary, the, that program you're just talking about, I think the shredding, there's a change to that. I don't know if you wanted to touch on that, the time?
Oh, the shredding? Yeah, the shredding's at 8:00. It used to be at 10:00. We moved it to 8:00, and every resident can bring up to four banker's boxes. If anybody doesn't know what a banker's box is, it looks like this big, not very big, but it, you can hold all your important papers in them, and they can shred up to four, and they shred it right, right in front of you, and you watch it go through, and they actually see all the confetti coming down into the, into the containers. So it works out really, really well. And it's a great service that the town provides to the residents, but only if you use it.
Right.
Can you repeat the date, Gary?
Yes, July 27th this year, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM.
Thank you. Thank you. You'd like to go next?
I guess I got nominated.
I guess so. Congratulations.
Thank you. So I just want to talk about two things. At our May 22nd, excuse me, 23rd meeting, two weeks from tonight, we're going to be talking about the impact of glyphosate, which is Roundup, on the community. I wrote about it in last month, two months ago's town newsletter. I've also put something into DRW, and it sparked a tremendous amount of interest. Weston is interested as well as eliminating it in their communities, stopping the landscape maintenance companies from using it. I haven't spoken to Davie yet, but I'm getting Davie residents. DRW is Davie, Weston, and the Ranches. So when you put something out there, people call from all over the place. They're very interested in, in stopping the use as well because Debbie Green introduced me to a neighbor back about two, three months ago who just lost a dog to cancer. And that conversation led to probably another dozen in the community that have lost their dogs to cancer in the last couple of years, mouth cancer, all sorts of nasty things. I hear the same thing from friends in Weston. I'm going to be going to their council meeting after we discuss it here, and then doing the same in Davie. Stuff's bad news. I mean, we lost two dogs likely because I didn't pay for autopsies and all that, but one had cancer, the other one had liver failure, and the vet said both times, this is likely from the chemicals you're applying in the yard. It's shocking how many people realize this now. You know, people are telling me, oh, I read about your solution made out of salt and vinegar and what's the third thing? So, thank you. So, and so many people are using that these days. My brother in New York, who has no connection to any of this, that's what he uses in his yard. So we'll be talking about that. There are some things that code compliance can do to persuade people that this is a bad idea. And we really don't have too many retailers in town. I guess we have Lowe's, you know, to, to pass any laws like Weston may do to stop sale, Roundup in the community. Weston just has, you think of Weston just having Home Depot, but they have another business called Site One. If you're not aware of them, they were originally called Lasco. Then they went on to be owned by Green Thumb. When, they're pretty much one of the biggest chemical suppliers in the area. They provide the landscape companies with all of their chemicals, whether it's Roundup or fertilizer or insecticides, herbicides, fungicides, all those types of things. And if Weston is willing to eliminate glyphosate in their own community, that would be one place that would go a long way throughout Broward County to blocking the use. One of the things I'll be bringing up is stopping our own landscape companies that do maintenance for the town from using it in our parks or any of our public facilities. I mean, that's the least we can do. That was item number one that I just wanted to mention. So if you're interested in the topic, please come out to our next meeting on the 23rd. Mayor, are you going to be talking about the firehouse, the recent news on that? If not, I'll talk about it.
No, go ahead.
I probably caught you by, what is he even talking about?
Right, go ahead.
So the town has been working towards building a firehouse out west.
Public safety building.
Excuse me, thank you. Actually, an emergency operations center, but a public safety building. That's, that's probably the best term for it. We've had some challenges finding sites there. We don't have a lot of available land left in town to, to build these types of things, you know, and where you put it is extremely important as well because this is, again, one of those things that people don't want it right in their backyard. But in any case, we'd looked at sites in, in different places to acquire, and we had one that we thought was pretty good, but we just couldn't close the deal on it. So what we've been working on is using a corner of country estates, and the administration has been working with county to figure out, since that's, that property was purchased on grants, things like that, you know, how we can work with that. Well, the, I thought the biggest hurdle that we were confronted with was some challenges from the town of Davie. You know, for moving it 1,000 feet down the road, it impacts their response times out of the facilities to the east of us here. But they have approved us using that site at this point to, to move forward on. So Russell, do you see any other major blockers at this point, or you think that was our last big one?
Was certainly one of the challenges. The other challenge was obviously the granting agencies, but our esteemed attorney has been working with the attorney's office for Broward County, and I think he'll report under his attorney report some progress on that.
Good, good. So we're, we're that much closer to having Davie now from east to west and, you know, no more concerns about trucks coming from the east to, to get out west, particularly when we have, whether they're health problems or I should say emergencies out west as far as 27, or even they also respond sometimes to Everglades Holiday Park. So good news. That's, that's tremendous progress, something we've been talking about for as long as I can remember.
Absolutely.
So thanks again, Russell. And Steve gets a lot of the credit, the mayor gets a lot of the credit as well because he, I know how he works. He's a behind the scenes kind of guy, and it's, he's constantly pushing our administration to move forward on this. So thanks, Mayor.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Thanks, folks, for coming out. David Kozinski, District 4 and Vice Mayor. Let me touch on Rural Arts and Design Advisory Board photo contest issue as well. Your submissions, not only could they end up on the calendar, but also on the beautiful Rancher magazine, which has become very, very popular since the remake. I'm getting a lot of feedback on that. They really liked the, the new design. My second issue, I like, kind of like the idea that Marianne was talking about. You know, town of Davie actually has a committee to protect our farms. And I think that if we have something here that we can do to, to preserve our true ag properties that have a true ag purpose, if we have that in Town Hall, we can do what this town was founded on is our rural lifestyle. You know, our, even, even to our code, our reactive code, it protects our freedom because, you know, we, we don't want code bearing down on every single property, driving by and looking by and say, oh, there's a, there's a code violation, it's sidem, sidem, sidem. Our, our town was founded on the freedom of reactive where, you know, you can do on your property as long as it doesn't bother somebody else's nearby. So that's just the point that I was making. Yet with something in Town Hall that we can have to help protect our ag properties. Now to move on to the Law and Order Report that I do every month. District 1, we've had five citations last month, all on Griffin Road. District 2, there were seven citations, five of those were speeding. One of those speeding tickets were on 178th Internal Road. District 3, there were 31 citations issued last month, 18 speeding, seven of those, 18, were on 172nd and Internal Road. District 4, always the leader, Sunshine Ranches, 60 citations, 46 speeding that exceeded everybody put together. Four of those were inter, interior roads, so that would mean the 41 of those were out here on Griffin. It said that there were two warnings given in the town. Now speeding, I'm going to get on a soapbox a little bit because there was, I, I had a phone call this morning about somebody driving very excessive speeds on Hollity Trail, and law enforcement is aware of the individual. You know, if you speed 30 miles an hour over the speed limit, that's actually a misdemeanor in the state of Florida. If you are driving 50 miles an hour or more over the speed limit and it's your third time, that is actually a third degree felony. You get five years in prison, $5,000 fine, and a 10-year revocation of your driver's license. Speeding is, is not acceptable in, in this town. And to have these phone calls while I'm working that there's individuals driving around in their four-wheelers just really, really upsets me. And last Sunday, there was an issue about some people that were shooting possibly iguanas on my street. But when I was talking to the law enforcement officers, I was advised that mail theft is again on the rise, and these homes that were recently targeted were allegedly on Sterling Road. So police officer said, is there a way we can impose folks to get locking mailboxes? I said, no, we're a town of freedom. But we can suggest it, we can encourage it. So if you don't have a locking mailbox, please try to go get one because, once again, that ugly head has risen about mail theft. Thanks.
Thank you, David. Jim?
Mayor, thank you. I know it's a long night for you. First of all, I'd like to say that I attended the Country Estates Homeowners Association meeting Monday night, and I spoke briefly about school closings. And I'll be darned if Tuesday morning, it wasn't all over the news. I didn't know it was coming, but that was a pleasant surprise. It's not going to affect Southwest Ranches, but it is going to affect Broward County. There are a number of schools. I understand there may be as many as 70 schools that'll be closing. Think about what that does to the community. It really affects the communities that it's in. And pay attention to the school board when they start talking about this, all right? And maybe there's something that we could do, although we don't have actual schools here except for Archbishop McCarthy in our district. But, you know, that's a, that's a thing that's coming up. Secondly, I had the privilege of attending the Davie Fire Rescue Annual Awards Ceremony. And Chief Bennett, you had two of your officers, firefighters, that were honored there. That was Vijay Vollman and Rolando Romero received awards. They were part of the group that saved a person's life. They had a cardiac arrest. They gave him the paddles three or four times, brought him back, and he survived. Davie has one of the highest ratings for bringing people, keeping them alive than anywhere in the nation. They are very proud. And some of the other states are starting to use their training and guidelines to do it. So I was really happy to represent the town there, and thank you, Chief. You've got a great bunch of people. Today, I had the privilege of representing the town, and I love representing the town, at the Broward County Police Benevolent Association. There, they honored the policemen that went above and beyond. They showed video of three police officers running into gunfire, running into gunfire, not away from it, into it, to save a family and to take down a bad person. That lasted, the video lasted probably three or four minutes. In that three or four minutes, the perpetrator, the person that was, that was killed, fired eight or 10 shots, and the officers got off about 20 or 30 shots and were able to take him down. But they ran into that, they didn't run away. So I was very proud that they honored these officers. And the Davie Police Department here, I want to say thank you for everything that you do for this town, okay, to keep us safe. I wouldn't be a police officer, there's not enough money in the world to give me your job. But thank you. Next week, I'll be attending the Broward and Palm Beach Water Advisory Board meeting. It'll be in Palm Beach. This is the board that looks at sea level rises, water, ground level rising, and the storage of water. It's a 10-year program. They're working with the Corps of Engineers, and they're doing everything they can to stop that from happening. But global warming has really stepped up, and what they predicted five years ago is coming sooner than they thought. The 10-year plan is now pushed to five years. The Corps of Engineers doesn't have the money. Each one of these pumping stations costs $82 million. We need five pumping stations between. We need five pumping stations between here and Dana to get the water out and they just don't have the money. So they're looking at ways to stop that, to keep it from happening and I'm proud to sit on that board and be a part of that. And lastly, I'd like to tell people just something real quick and I know this may seem out of place. I've had a vested interest in this place for 54 years and I know a lot of you look at you, I'm not that old, I know it doesn't look that, but I came out here in 1970 to this very place. On a handshake brought my bought my property, all right? And I've been looking after this town ever since. I do everything I can to keep this town rural, to keep it the unique place that everybody loves and lives in. And I can assure you that this town staff, these residents and this town council is doing everything they can every single day to keep that going. So don't think that we're not doing anything, don't think that there's more that we can do. There's a lot more that we can do, but we're fighting every day to protect it. So I want to say thank you to all you for showing up and I am done, Mayor.
Thank you, Jim. All right, just a few comments to follow up on some things. First of all, let me kind of do the the good news. Yeah, we do our, we are starting our Super Tots program, super excited about it, starting on June 1st. This is for our youngest, our youngest ranchers from a year and a half to five years old and it's it's a morning program from nine in the morning until noon. And so that'll be kicking off here if if what's what's the best way if people want to sign up?
It's a registration event.
Can you come on, just?
I was going to address it, but that's fine, go ahead.
Okay.
That's okay.
The the June 1st program is strictly a registration event. They're going to get to see a little bit about what the program will be. The programs themselves start June 18th, 19th and 20th, those will be the first three days, but everybody who comes to the June 1st event, it's free. You go to the Rolling Oaks Barn from nine to noon and they can register their kids and the kids will get a free T-shirt and it's just to kind of help the community get into it, know about it.
Awesome. Great, thank you, December.
Mayor, just to add to that, we have a flyer in the back. If anybody wants to learn more about that registration event, they're in the back.
Good. And can we post that online and do that as a an email blast?
Absolutely.
Yeah, good, thank you. All right, so that's exciting. Great to see that going off. I know there was a question, Keith, during public comment about whether residents can can go to you for if they want to have questions, if you can please address that during your legal comments, appreciate that. There was a comment made about that when we did our proclamation for for the condemnation of Hamas and the terrorism, that we also had funding associated with that. There was no funding associated with that. It was just a proclamation. The Ag Department, I think that's a that's a that's a great idea and I appreciate that being brought up. I think that we, I would like to pursue that and see what we can do to support that. I don't know if we can be ready for something next meeting or not, but I definitely would like to get it on a future meeting. So Mary Ann, I appreciate you bringing that up. I think that's, I think that's, that's a great idea.
Mayor, can I just address that very quickly since we're on the topic? I was going to talk about it under my comments, but so just so the residents are aware, they may not be aware, but the property appraiser comes out to town hall every month, on the first Tuesday of every month, and they dedicate that time to answer any questions that residents have, whether it's about, you know, filing for an ag classification or for anything else, anything related to, you know, the deeds on their property, whatever, you know, anything like that. So so they, we have that resource available to them right now. I did speak also to Marty Care earlier today, as a matter of fact, about a couple of issues and one of them is the the potential for doing something like this that it would be geared towards ag. He's done that before, if you recall, we had him out here a couple of years ago to meet like a community event, like a workshop, if you will, to meet with the residents about ag classification, what it meant and how to file for it. So he and I are in the initial discussions about doing something like that into in the near future, so just wanted you to be aware of that.
Good, awesome. Very good.
Is there something out there?
Mm-hmm.
Russell, I think that's a great idea, but I'm not sure if that's the limits of just ag classification that Mary Ann was talking about. I was planning on reaching out to her as well, just to get, you know, more of an idea of what her intent was.
That's fine. Yeah. Just wanted everybody to be aware.
All right. And then the last thing that I wanted to say, having to do with the mail theft, it is picking up again and I don't know if you want to get the mailbox with the lock on it, that certainly is a great idea, but I would also encourage you, just even with the the mail that you've got now, is just try and get in a habit of getting your mail before it gets before the sun goes down, before it gets dark. And that's not a guarantee, but it certainly certainly is helpful and that's when most of the thefts, not all, but most of the thefts take place after dark. All right. Legal comments?
Just real briefly, Mayor, as it relates to the fire station on Country Estates Park, we are continuing to work with the county and the state agency on its approval of that. Broward County originally thought there were some hurdles, but they think they've overcome the hurdles. They've asked for an opinion from their bond counsel to confirm, we're waiting for that opinion to come back. With that opinion in hand, we'll be able to take that to the state agency and try to finalize the process. So so far, we're on the right track. As far as the P3 is concerned, just a quick update, it continues to go through finalization and fruition. Russell and I have a meeting with staff on Monday to concerning the wetlands and as you all know, they're mitigating the wetlands in a park that's required to have wetlands. So they're probably saving the town over a million dollars in park improvements that we would have to make to put wetlands on another park. So it's winding up to be even a better contract than we originally expected. To answer your your final question, happy to speak to residents all the time. I'm not legally allowed to speak to a resident who's represented by legal counsel, but anyone else I'm happy to speak to.
Great, thank you, Keith. All right, administrative comments.
Thank you, Mayor. So just a few other items, many of of my other items were covered already. We did have the presentation earlier today on the restroom facility and one of the components of that was to seek funding to get the project done. So as you, as I alluded to back in in April, when we had the initial discussion, we have a budget shortfall for the project as projected right now. Based on the very conservative estimates, we feel that we have a shortfall and what we wanted to do was to get consensus from council to move forward with doing some reallocation of funding and if I'll just kind of outline that right now. So the initial project estimate is somewhere close to, not exactly, but close to $2 million to do that project. We have $1.3 million allocated from ARPA funding, so we identified approximately about a $700,000 shortfall. What I'd like to do is ask council permission to allocate some of that unassigned ARPA funding that we have. We have about $300,000 worth of projects that we're funding that we haven't assigned to a specific project that I'd like to reallocate to this project, so bringing our shortfall down to $400,000. We also received a grant award just pending the governor's signature in the amount of $200,000 from FERDA that we would apply to this, so that brings our shortfall down to $200,000. What I'd like to do is ask council for your permission to go ahead and take $200,000 from unassigned fund balance, our reserves, formerly known as reserves, and basically allocate it to this project. That will allow us to basically go out to bid, to get a contract on board to, you know, and see what the bids come in at, but we can't put it out to bid unless I know I have the funding for the project.
Thank you, Russell. Question on that. So I I get your logic. My my question is that these estimates that we've got in so far are rough estimates done by estimators, not by actual vendors or contractors that we might contract with. And so and on their own admission, they indicated that they were very conservative, probably high numbers. Hopefully that's true. So I'm a little concerned about allocating too much money than than what we really need. It seems like we, I guess, maybe you can talk through normally at the end of the year when certain things go over budget, we do the allocation. I I kind of like having the lower number when we go out to bid so that it motivates contractors to think that, you know, there's not as much money there, let's not, let's not bid up that high or, you know, let's, let's, let's watch what our bid amount is as opposed to if the there's $2 million there, we'll probably get bids in for for $2 million. So I'm not sure how to walk that line, but I'm a little concerned about allocating that money when that may be a very conservative price, the price may be significantly less than that and this may motivate some of the bids to come in higher.
Well, I mean, the other, and I'll defer to Emile on this, but I think maybe what we can do is as as long as council is supportive that we go out to bid, see what the bids come in at, and if it's over the amount that's currently allocated, but I would still need support to to reallocate funding, you know, and basically be able to do that because if we get bids that come in and they come in at, let's say, 1.7, 1.8, we just can't move forward until we have that allocation.
I have no problem with with getting a vote or a consensus, whatever we need to show the support for doing that. I have a problem with putting $2 million on the table and then going out to bid.
Understood. So it, I guess if we could, if I could ask for just consensus that, you know, council would support, obviously going out to bid for right now and then reexamining what the cost would be.
Let me add one more thing, just to be more specific. So the ARPA funds, the extra, what is it, $300,000 there? I have no problem allocating that because I want to make sure that doesn't go someplace else. The and then the other $200,000 for that grant, that that would be, I have no problem with that. It's the additional $200,000 that I really have a problem with, but I can tell Emile would like to contribute.
I just want to make a comment on the ARPA funding. When the ARPA funding requirements was for the town to submit that report on the 30th of April, which we did, during that allocation of funds, the two to $300,000 ARPA funding allocation that Russell was mentioning was pretty much estimated at the time of the conversation. We would have, I was able to identify exactly a surplus of 200. There's projects that have not been finalized or completed, which we can absolutely reallocate or reappropriate those funds as councils provide directions to us. So that said, that would bring the amount, if we go to what we have reported, which is not written stone unless we have initiated the project, we can always go back and make that change. So the 300 that was actually mentioned, we can bring that down to 200, which then will bring the deficit rather than the 200, less than that, which in essence measures comment as to having that deficit meet when the time comes when we go out to be, it would bring the amount lower than the 2 million. I'm not sure if I made my, said clear.
I'm not really following you 100% to be honest with you.
I thought we had $300,000 in unassigned or not allocated for other ARPA projects, so we.
That was correct based on our conversation when we had back in April. When we, when I submitted the report, I reappropriated, the surplus was not was not 300. The amount was estimated to be between 200 and 300. And when I mentioned to you up to 300 is because that amount could actually be reallocated. 200, based on some of the structures, we have about $50,000, which we discussed for security improvement, which hasn't even been committed yet for the project to begin. That's an additional 50,000, which was part of the discussions in order for us to meet the encumbrance report for the ARPA funding. So what I'm saying is that the 2 million, close to or approximately 2 million, if that would bring that amount down, I mean, it would increase the 200 to 300 or up to 300.
I think so, so long as council is willing to allow us to have the allocation of the unassigned or unallocated ARPA funding, I think that's really what I'm looking for.
That's exactly what I'm looking for.
Whatever that final number ends up being is what it is.
Yeah, yeah, and and I I 100% agree with that. I mean, I think this is a critical product project for a lot of things that go on in town and we definitely want to go forward with it. I just want to motivate our vendors to be as as frugal as possible. So are we all comfortable with with committing to to funding? Yeah, go ahead.
So Russell, we were talking about, say, 200,000 as a round number. Have the estimators put a contingency in there because I'd hate to be on the hook for an exact number where they don't assume that there'll be issues because there always are. Doesn't make a difference what kind of project.
Yeah, I mean, there.
5%? 10%?
I don't recall the number. Rod, do you happen to recall the number? If there's a.
Yeah, I don't know the the number off the top of my head. I don't know it.
Okay, so when we, when we have our estimates in from, or I should say our bids in and somebody is going to bid a million seven, just as another nice round number, we need to make sure that there's some contingency. I don't know what it's going to be.
Sure.
5%? 10%? Maybe it's 20% in this world. So that way we've got a number that is our worst-case scenario.
Right.
Good, thank you.
Yep.
Great, thank you, Bob. All right, so I think we have a consensus for that.
Thank you.
Okay.
I just wanted to bring you up to speed on a couple of other things. We had a hurricane exercise here in this very room this morning with town staff, just to kind of get us ready for hurricane season, which is right around the corner. You know, we identified some challenges that could be presented. We had some excellent, excellent creative, what we call injects that were that were developed by Emily and and Rod and his team. And so we were faced with a lot of different contingencies, so we were kind of all, we weren't able to just have a patterned response and that's exactly what would happen in a regular storm. So I was very encouraged by the training that was put on today by staff. I was very proud of the team that we have and I can tell you that we will be better prepared and sharpened for, you know, for any kind of eventuality that should come forward. So just wanted to thank Rod and Emily and the rest of the team that participated this morning. I'm very proud of the team, so did a good job. Also want to say that the town in partnership with Waste Management, we've talked about this before, created that PSA, the Public Service Announcement that has been seen before. I just wanted to let everybody know that we will soon be sending out a mailing that will have a decal that will go to every residence that has basically how to recycle right, kind of reinforcing the the right way to recycle. And so we're going to be sending that out very soon and we'll ask you in the in the letter that we send out with that decal to fix that decal to your recycling cart. So this way it just kind of reemphasizes the way that we should be recycling. The last thing that I wanted to bring to your attention was we are, I'm very happy to announce that we received a grant for something that we applied for back in September for Comprehensive Vulnerability and Sea Level Rise Assessment Grant. We applied for that grant in September and we were awarded the grant. It has no match and so we used the $200,000 to develop a plan basically to to be ready for the future impacts of sea level rise and also help us determine and use that information for future drainage projects and things of that nature. So just wanted to make you all aware of that.
Awesome, great, thank you, Russell.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, resolution number 12.
This is a resolution of the Town Council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, accepting the resignation of Eugene Steinfeld Esquire, of Eugene M. Steinfeld, Attorney-at-Law, PA, as the Town Special Magistrate, appointing Michael Garcia Esquire of Michael Garcia, PA, as the Town Special Magistrate, authorizing the mayor, town administrator and town attorney to enter into an agreement with Michael Garcia, PA and providing for an effective date.
Motion to approve. Second. I have a motion, a second. Any comments from the council?
Mayor, would you like me to introduce real quick?
Yeah, I would, actually I would.
So at the council's direction, they asked me to help find a secondary special magistrate. As you're all aware, Eugene Steinfeld was slowly retiring, was going on vacation often, including the month of May when he went to Europe and we wanted a secondary magistrate, so you all asked me to commence a search. We issued an immediate procurement that did not receive any responses, so I asked town staff to reissue the procurement, hold it out a little longer this time to see if we got responses. We ended up getting two responses from two individuals who I know well. Michael Garcia I worked with and Andrea McKinney Richard worked with. We've known them both for a long time. They were both very good attorneys, very good candidates. Michael Garcia had worked for the town directly in the past, knows it very well, knows its lifestyle incredibly well, worked on Pembroke Pines issues and numerous other issues for the five years that he was at the town hall. As a result, the the committee who did the procurement met, they reviewed both applicants, found them both to be competent applicants, came back to me and said they were competent and as a result, I am making the recommendation to you to select Michael Garcia. He fits wonderful categories for the town, including being fluent in both Spanish and English, including the fact that he runs a very large Spanish organization in Broward County and is very well respected from that. I've received numerous. I've received numerous calls from residents who know him and have advocated for him and said that they couldn't have believed such an incredible choice could fall in the town's laps. And he agreed to do it at the town's prevailing rate of 175 an hour as a favor to the Town of Southwest Ranches. That really helped him build his career to where he is today. After the hearing of the procurement, Mr. Steinfeld, who we owe a debt of gratitude to for his years of service to the town, called Russell and advised Russell that he appreciates the 20-some-odd years that he worked at the town. He didn't see enough work in the town that would require him to stay on as a part-time basis, and therefore, he resigned effective immediately as the magistrate from the town before he just embarked for his trip to Europe. We truly thank him for his years of service. Now, we have no magistrate under the town's code. We have to fill it. And as a result, the town attorney is charged with the ability to assess the people who have been recommended to the town and have applied to the town and to make a recommendation of the council, which we are doing so for your consideration.
Thank you, Keith. Keith, have we, have we looked to, I'm not sure what the interview process was there, whether it was a formal interview process or if it was based on prior experience and working together. But have there, was there any conversation about any conflicts of interest, any prior relationships with either council members or individuals that are running for being on the council?
None. Michael Garcia hasn't worked in this town for years and years and years, had no involvement with any current.
I wish Michael was here this evening, so I could ask him that question.
Yeah, but there are none, Mayor.
Because I think there might be one. So I would like to, I would like that posed to Mr. Garcia before we vote. I'd like to table this item for the next meeting. Is there a second? Can we take a vote?
Councilmember Auburn?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
No.
Vice Mayor Kaczynski?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes. Thank you.
All right, item number 13.
I'm up.
You got it.
Okay. All right, thank you. And I'm glad certain people are here, so they can hear this firsthand. Basically, I wanted to talk about possible charter amendments that have come to light recently. I want the residents to understand that I'm bringing up these concerns to protect the town now and in the future. And there have been residents who have told me that what I'm proposing is, for possible charter amendments, is not legal. I'm sure Ms. Parrish or Judge Cohen will probably tell me that in public session. However, I would refer to get our town attorney opinion by our next meeting. These items that are listed for discussion but are really here to inform the council on matters that recently came to light, and if these matters should preclude anyone from holding public office here in the town. First, the property ownership in question. Is it corporation, not a person? We've had that, we've never had that before. And a corporation can change personnel, come and go, day in and day out, and there's no real way to know if that person's invested in the community. So we've never, we've always had somebody who's on the deed and have been here multiple years in the residency. I realize they have to sign an affidavit, but who checks that? That's strictly a ministerial purview of the clerk's office, not an enforcement issue. So I have a problem with that, because it's too easy to manipulate that when you have a corporation as a property owner and then running for public office. And I'm sure there are people who'll take issue with that, but I'm just telling you as my thoughts go on. Second item is the same corporation owes back taxes on the property. And, you know, how a person can run for office and not own property, not pay the taxes that's the basis of our budget each year, you know, I don't think it's ethical for a council member to be delinquent on their taxes and have the authority to tax residents who pay our taxes. That's what we run on, our budget. You know, if everybody said, "I'm not going to pay your taxes," well, the only thing we would have would be the gasoline tax revenue. I mean, it's, it's not, it's not a good idea. This would be completely irresponsible and wrong. And I think that I'd like to have Keith ask the state attorney or whatever office, Office of Elections, whatever it is, that he can reference that on, as to how that works, if it's feasible. And if it is, he'll get back to us and then report back to us if it's not. At this point, you know, I take comments from the council, but nothing's been decided at this point. This would not affect this coming election. This would be something for the future that I think we need to address, is why I'm bringing it up now. And I'm not sure, you know, you know, how well it's going to be, work out with Keith's request, but I, you know, I'm hopeful, you know, on something like that. So if you guys want to, if any of you guys want to chime in on any of this, go ahead, you know, and you're up to public, rock and roll, you know?
Any comments on this, folks?
I'll go. Regarding the first item, say, somebody, 24-year-old girl lives with her parents. She wants to run for mayor. She's not a property owner. Would this preclude her from running for mayor? My question.
I don't understand. I didn't hear the question.
If, say, somebody lives with their parents, 20, in their 20s, would she be precluded from running for any office? Because she lives with her parents, she's not a homeowner, but she lives with her parents, who are?
No, but she would be a legal resident. We're talking about a corporation right now.
Okay.
Where you have employees that come and go.
Right. Okay.
Yeah, we're comparing apples and oranges.
All right.
At least I think so. I mean, I'm not an attorney. You are.
Mayor, if you would, I spoke to a number of people after this come up on the agenda. And if council would look into that, I'll go along with whatever the recommendation is from council. I believe that the state has a ruling on that, and he can come back with that. And as to the finding out, you know, about people, I was asked about people running for office and what they've done in the past. And I'm going to tell you what a middle school student told me. If you go on the computer, the internet, you can find just about anything about anybody. Today, your life is like an open book. There isn't much you can't hide. So if any of you are interested in finding out about who's running for office, any of the candidates, go online, look it up, and that way, you'll have firsthand information. Won't be secondhand, somebody told you something. Just take the time to go online, look up each candidate, and you'll have the information yourself. And that's all I got to tell you. Thank you.
Bob, any comments?
I don't, I hadn't considered corporation versus resident.
Right, I didn't consider that.
That's why I'm interested to hear an NAG opinion on this.
Yeah, I'd like to hear the opinion, too. I don't, I don't like the timing of this, to be honest with you. I think more than anything, that's what bothers me about it.
Yep.
You know, certainly, I don't like the timing of it, but, you know, seems, anyway, I'll, you know, there's elements of it that makes sense, but the timing of it is concerning to me. All right, let me open it up to the public. Go ahead, Gay. Kick us off. Go ahead.
You've got to be kidding me.
There you go. There you go.
What the heck? I almost used a bad word.
Don't do it.
You know, corporations might own it. Well, guess what? My property isn't in my name, so I can't run. I've lived there for 60 years, but I can't run because my property isn't in my name? Hmm. Is that the biggest thing we have to worry about? What are we doing? We're going to make a whole list of things so that we can shrink it down so that we have only a select group of people that can run for office? And I've got news for you. I wouldn't want to run for office, because when I looked at what you have to divulge and all that garbage you have to write, I don't, why would I want to be up there in the first place? But this, come on, come on. Who are you after? I mean, you've got to be after somebody to come up with this. I don't get it. I really don't get it. There are bigger and better things for you people to put on this thing and address than this. I don't even have any patience for it.
I actually signed up to speak, so that Keith won't have such a time. Look up Alan Pembroke in Cooper City, and he ran against Sue Ellen Fardleman. He lived in an apartment. Back when I first registered to vote, I lived in the city of Miramar, and you had to be a freeholder. And so I remember that, you know, that was a big thing. You had to own property. Alan Pembroke was a young guy who lived in the apartments in Cooper City. He didn't win the election, but he has every right to vote. And thank goodness, in the '70s, they passed the Civil Rights Act so that there'd be no more Jim Crows and couldn't prohibit minorities predominantly from voting. So it doesn't matter if you rent, rent a room for somebody. If your voter's registration is, and you claim it's your residence, you're absolutely allowed. As far as not paying property taxes, I worked for a county commissioner that I'm not so sure she ever paid her property taxes in all the time that I worked with her. She had liens and tax liens. I think it says to me, I certainly didn't trust her much to vote on financial matters that came before the county commission, but you can't remove somebody because they don't have money and they haven't paid their taxes. So I guess what I'm saying is, I kind of understand where you're coming from philosophically, but legally, you're dead in the water. Thanks.
Mary Ann Allen Mustang Trail. So I was on the Charter Review Committee, and we can only put so many things on the election ballot from the charter amendments, and we had a lot of great suggestions for you. One of the important ones right now is what David suggested, which is to change the three, three-to-two vote, or let's have it 5-0, okay? A lot of the residents want a 5-0 vote in case you start changing our code. And I know you guys are benign, you're very helpful to us, but that doesn't mean you're going to be here forever. We don't know after this election what we're going to be looking at, and it's an uncertain future. So if you put on the charter amendment to have a 5-0 vote for any kind of code change, because it really does impact a lot of people, put that on the voting ballot box, okay? Not this other stuff that people aren't going to understand. And the other thing that we had was really important, because when you have your oath of allegiance to our charter, you have to work with that. The very first line of our charter is to preserve our rural and residential lifestyle. And we wanted to include that, to include farms, nurseries, and agricultural and equestrian pursuits. I believe you have the wording, and we didn't get to do it on the last. This is the time to put that in there. Let's preserve, and let's put it in writing now, not just rural and residential. It's too vague. Let's narrow it down. This was one of the important things, the first thing that we talked about in the Charter Review Committee. And thank you, David, for suggesting me to be on there. That was a privilege and an honor to serve the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann.
Good evening, folks. John Garrati, 162nd Avenue. That was all addressed to me. That's kind of cool, though. I like the attention. So I've been living here since 2001. You can switch title on a property for whatever you'd like, in a corporation, in a personal name. If it so matters so much, I do it because I want to. It's as simple as that. I have a particular lender I deal with. I have real estate in Indian River County. I have real estate in Miami-Dade County. There's a system, and I hope Mrs. Parrish can correct me if I'm saying this wrong. If you don't pay your taxes by a certain date, there's a system in place. It's kind of like a business. People invest in tax certificates, and it's, if you walk in and say, "Here's my 12 grand weight. I'm not paying it today. I'm going to pay it in two years." I'm borrowing my own money. It's, I have to pay the rate. It's not anything illegal. So it's a matter of opinion. He doesn't pay his taxes on time. If I'm not saying this wrong, the county gets paid, the town gets paid, there's an investor that buys a certificate. So I'm not going to lose my million-dollar home, I can't believe it's a million bucks, but for 11 grand, I would never do that. So I don't know what you guys are so afraid of. Is it that I'm a little younger, I'm a little rougher on the edges? I get it. I understand that. It's different, and people don't like different things sometimes, right? But let's have common sense. Let's, let's take the person at face value for today, right? You can look me up. There's things on there. I've never been convicted of a felony. Mr. Hartman, the other day, said there was two convicted felons running for office. I'd like to know who that second one is. It sure ain't me. I've never been convicted of any felony anywhere. So if you're pointing at me and you're, if you're saying that, it ain't me. So you got one. We know Mr. McCain, right? But if you're saying that, Bob, I, please say it, because I've never been convicted. So I don't want to get off topic, but I got one more second. Let's be realistic. We're in 2024. Thank you, guys.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, public comment closed. Yeah, I mean, I guess we checked this out, but I don't, I don't think this is the right thing, the right direction to be going in. I get where you're going. If we want to do the follow-up and see the legality of it, I'm fine with that. I'm fine with that.
Couple phone calls.
Yep, yep. I will say this, Keith, in the future, I would appreciate a couple phone calls before we have this big discussion rather than after we have the big discussion, okay? I get it, I get it. But let's, you know, this, I've said enough. All right. Item number 14, Gary.
Me again?
Yeah, I think so.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, thank you. Thank you all for coming out.